This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, Ms. Kelmeyer.
Here.
Ms. O'Connell. Jerry, you gotta unmute yourself. I see she's on. I'm gonna go ahead and marker is here. And, let's see.
Are y'all Connells here?
Okay, gotcha Jerry. This is, uh, this.
Smokes.
Ms. Dillon.
Here.
I see she, okay, gotcha. Mr. Kish?
Yeah, I'm here, but I can hardly hear you.
Oh.
It's not you, it's gotta be me.
I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, I hear a box.
Huh.
Okay, and Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Okay, sir, you have a quorum. Would you like me to go through the agenda?
Yeah, if you would, Cal.
Okay, you have a copy of a revised agenda that we sent out. And that just adds some discussion on some contract revision to allow for future FEMA claims, if they ever happen. As it was, this round, I went ahead and certified that there was no, no one that, this is the Hatch Act and there's no lobbying. And nobody collected 100,000, no contracts were in excess of 100,000. So, we didn't have to file anything. But this provision, which Chris sent out to you, is something that says that if there is a FEMA claim and any funds are being spent, and if they exceed, if they're $100,000 or more, then it would be, you know, we will comply with the Hatch Act. So, that's the addition, which would be 17. All right, any other additions or corrections?
I have none.
Hearing none, I take, I take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any audience members with a comment for the agenda on an agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the minutes. You got a copy of the September 18 minutes? And are there any additions, corrections, or changes?
I have none.
I have none.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved, Cal.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the Mitch and the utility report. Mitch, you're up, buddy.
Good morning, everybody. Hope everybody's healthy and well. Everything at the utility has been running smooth for quite a while. The well field is, everything is good. Everything's operating as designed, no issues. The water plant, it's making great water, it's running correctly. The AC unit for the motor control room, we got the three bids. Admiral Air, I was never able to get a price out of them. They wanted to change the sizing of the AC. And after speaking with Ron, it was decided that they should be left the way they were designed. And I never got a bid back from Admiral Air. But anyway, it was given to JP, Brett, and Son. They were the lowest, and it was below what you guys had agreed to. And they ordered everything and should be installing it next week.
Good.
The waste, the wastewater plant, everything is, is running fine at the wastewater plant. There are no issues. The irrigation pump station, the generator, the company that serviced them, they were able to, I guess they had another generator that, of the same make, that had some issues. And they were able to take the parts out of it and, and patch the one up on the irrigation pump station or the canal station. So that one is back running until we can get more quotes and maybe at a later date decide on a replacement plan for that one. Other than that, I think all the, no, no water main breaks or lift station issues. We've not had any issues out in the field in quite some time, other than a few meter issues. And really, it's been uneventful for the last couple of months. So, that, I don't have anything exciting to report, which maybe is good.
Good.
Okay. Mitch, it's, was noted that the, that the boil water notices that we had a while ago was due to generator failure?
Yes, sir.
Could you comment on that?
I can comment on that, absolutely. It was due to a generator failure one time. There were four boil water notices that year. One time was a generator issue. One time was a transfer switch issue. One time was due to the hurricane. We just could not produce enough water because the well field was down. And one time was due to VFD failures inside the water plant that run the high service pumps. So, there were four, four failures, four separate times. Redundancy has been built and everything. It still is no 100% guaranteed. But it was only due to a generator failure one time. And the, the statement that the generator is not exercised or maintained is absolutely 100% not correct. Or at least not as long as we have been operating your facility.
Okay, how often do you exercise the, since the day you took over, the generator?
Every, every Tuesday. It runs every Tuesday like clockwork. And there's only been one Tuesday in the four years that I've been working for you that it has not ran. And that's when there was a circuit board failure. And we had ordered parts. They were being next dated. And it did not run on that Tuesday. But other than that, it's ran every Tuesday since the first Tuesday I started working for you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'm sorry, Noreen, were you gonna say something? I see you.
Uh, no, that's, I'll do that later.
Okay. The skater replacement, Mitch?
That's a fake news report, so.
I'm sorry, I. Uh, was that Supervisor Kelmeyer?
Which way, that one?
Yes.
Yeah, Mitch, I think Cal just brought it up too. Mitch, what's the status of the skater replacement?
Um, that, that stuff has been scheduled. They came in and looked at everything, made a copy of what is there. And I'm sure they're working on it. That'll probably be done this month as well. So they just build the second union, unit offsite, and then they come in and install it, and we're good to go.
Okay.
But they do have the backup as of now.
Okay. Any other questions for Mitch?
No, I just wanna, Mitch, thank you, thank you for the meter for yesterday's presentation.
Oh, you're welcome.
What would you like, what would you like me to do with it now?
Just hang on to it. I'll get it from you at a later date.
Okay, it was very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else for Mitch? Mitch, you're gonna stick around though, right? In case there's anything that we need you.
Absolutely, I'll be here. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, nothing else for Mitch? That would take us to Claire.
Yes, sir.
All right, you got anything from Robert? Or do you want us to just go off of the notes that he submitted and is in the package?
Just go off the notes. I know he did tell me to tell you. He is at the port this morning. He's meeting with the electrician for the connection of the timer at the 41 median.
Oh, wonderful.
He's gonna be doing that. And then when he's done there, he's, I've sent him a text and he will be seeing, he'll be going to you Catherine, as soon as he's done with the electrician.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It, and Catherine is still working with Robert on all of these things. And I do know that with, looking at Chris's report and looking at this, it looks like you're keeping all of these issues in front of Robert. Plus, Robert gets a copy of Chris's report.
Sure.
So.
I, I, yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is, maybe next month, Robert and I can start meeting again and doing our write-around. But it's helpful, even having Chris's notes in front of you, just to take a general look at things.
Yes, ma'am.
With, with the.
That would be okay for next month.
Yeah, with the timeframe of Chris's report coming out and Robert's report needing to be done 10 days in advance, we may have to schedule a different day, other than that Monday or Tuesday before the CID meeting. But him and I can get together and decide which way we'll go with that.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm curious. Go ahead. I'm, I'm curious to.
No, no, you, you go ahead.
What are we gonna do about the lot that still have not been taken care of in terms of the exotics? We got an estimate from Robert. Is the CID gonna send these people another notice?
Well, the, all of these exotics are in your maintenance easement. So you can address them if you want. We typically, we send out letters once or twice now. And the letters stated that they had exotics and they had to take care of them. Some of them took care of them. Some of the others said, oh, those aren't ours. So, what we're, we were thinking of doing, unless the board just wants to go ahead and take care of it. But what I would like to see us do is, Chris is gonna send us a picture and try and take it to a point where you can also get the, identify the lot. And then send another letter saying, if you don't do it within 10 days, we're gonna do it and charge you. And we've got a price from Robert to take care of each of those lots.
Right, okay.
Are, are we?
Does that work for everyone?
Yes, Cal.
Yeah, I've got a question, Cal. Are we legally, and I use the word legally, able to remove them and then bill it back to the, the property owner?
I'll turn that to Dan.
Is this on private property? I'd prefer that we refer to code enforcement.
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that. They do own the property. The, we have an easement in that area where the, you know, these are growing. We don't own it, but we do have an easement for the drainage. So that's why I say you can do it if you wanna do it. But if not, we can turn it over to code enforcement. And what we'll do is.
If we're at the position that it's interfering with our drainage.
I do want to add.
Yes, Claire, go ahead.
I do want to add, 159 Windward K and 132 Wilderness K had also asked us for proposals. And they did get them, and they did approve the work to be done. So we will be removing those invasives next week. At the end of next week.
Good. Good.
So those are the two last addresses on the proposal that I submitted.
Yeah.
Right, the last.
About how many landowners have not complied? Do you know about how many landowners have not complied?
If I go through.
Uh, that would be. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking off of the proposal that I submitted. There was eight. We got two approvals on our own, one, two, three, four, five. So there'd be five, one, two, three, four, five, six left.
That's good.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because we don't, we don't want the rest of the port to be paying for that, so.
Correct. So what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and get the picture. We'll send another letter and say that if, and we should tell them that we've had that Robert Soto Land Lawn Services is available to take care of it. And they've estimated it will be X amount of dollars. We'll put their phone number on there where they can contact them. But if it's not taken care of 10 days after the receipt of this, it'll be turned over to code enforcement.
Okay. Cal?
Okay?
Cal?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to send these both certified return receipt requested and you, regular US mail? Do you recommend that?
We can. It, we haven't had a problem with, we've just been sending it regular mail.
Okay.
But we can. I. Will, in fact, that might be a good idea, return receipt requested.
And US mail, both ways, because a lot of people won't go to get it. But then if you send it by regular mail, you know they get it.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll send them both. Okay?
Okay.
Anything else for Robert? Okay, moving along, that brings us to the district manager. You have a copy of the financials. And we sent out today, the, the rates hadn't, the interest is the same. This is your cash and investment report. But he didn't go in and change the yield, which has gone down on both checking accounts. The money market wasn't affected, but the two checking accounts were. We just got approval for them to start charging for the, for, or paying interest on the checking account. Part of an ongoing negotiation, but the totals are the same. And that's the, it was .06. And now it's .14. It was .05, now it's .16. The statement, your trend report, that was revised also to reflect. One of the problems is, this is not a standard report. What our system produces is one that's based on, instead of calling it actual and budget, we still can have actual, but it becomes forecast. And then the computer will spit that out. The, the accounting software will split that, spit that out. And it's just a matter of how you look at it. But it'll carry the total all the way through. What we, the old one, we're doing manually. We were trying to replicate what Severn Trent had been doing. And so, it just, it's, it's been a mess. And it's, it's just a little task that somebody always has to remember to do it. And with all of the financials coming at the same time, sometimes he just forgets. But this way, the, the software program will take it right from the books and, and implement it in there. But it would be, you'll see, instead of year-to-date actual, it would be year-to-date, or just a forecast. Other than that, there was some comments regarding the, the financials, and we had, basically, those were, were audit adjustments. When we get the adjustments from the auditors, and every community gets them, we have to go back in and we put them in, as they say, with their journal entries. We don't, nobody's ever wanted to see that. But if you guys would like to see it, we'll make sure that, we'll send out an email or something. Or we'll send you a copy of the audit adjustments. Other than that, your year-end looks good. Got my, yeah. Yes.
Yeah. Can I just clarify what you were talking about with those audit entries that you put in? When, I feel, the only thing is, we had had discussions in the past about when the month ends, and we're looking at the current month, we're approving the current month. So if there were any changes to prior month, and in this case, a year-end adjusting entries are supposed to be backdated, back to the first month of the year. All I'm asking is that you communicate that to us, so that we know our numbers are changing for that month. Because without knowing that.
That's not a problem, I'm just saying. Sure. I've got, who just joined our meeting, but Dave Williams. And Dave's got a lot of years of experience in, in municipal accounting. He was an auditor in Michigan. And he teaches currently the governmental accounting on a national basis. And Dave's been retained to basically go through all of our, our work. He's our go-to problem solver. So, Dave, do you see any issues with, I guess, just send a copy of the audit adjustments? I mean, a lot of times, we didn't get the audit till June. So, you know, it's, then it's not a priority to make the adjustments right then. We just have to make the adjustments before the end of the fiscal year. They got put in in September. So I, Dave, any comments?
No, Cal, can everybody hear me okay?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the supervisor's comment's a good one. So these are just timing differences. And, you know, it's very easy for us to inform the board. Hey, we got the audit adjustments from the auditors, and we had to make this adjustment. So that you could see, because it did in fact change. We're gonna work with Cal's team on trying to minimize adjustments. Because the, the problem is, and it's not a bad problem, just a problem, is your meetings are earlier in the month, and its cutoff is sometimes a problem. And so, we're gonna work real hard, like maybe we do a quick close, like we do in industry. And then do a retrospective review of the post-September disbursements to see if any of them need to be pulled in. And then we could just send you guys a revised report with an expl, you know, with an explanation. But no, your point's a good one, ma'am. So, we'll try to be better about communicating.
Yeah, well, the way I've worked before, you usually have, you know, your quick closing. But the books will remain open for the late arrivals to be entered. But your suggestion about sending a revised end-of-the-year financial would be appreciated.
Yeah, and we can do a little quick and dirty over. Yeah, no, we could do a little quick and dirty overview for you. So, hey, we grabbed these expenses. We're just gonna try to make all the adjustments we can. And the other thing I was talking to Cal and his group on is, we kinda have to do a little educational process with the auditors too. Like, hey, guys, these are not your books. They belong to the district. And small immaterial adjustments shouldn't be made. They just shouldn't. Not all, you know, they do. Yeah, yeah, it just kinda, it creates a lot of work for everybody. But, you know.
It does.
It's some of the adjustments too. So particularly your district is, is much more complicated because of the fact that you have an enterprise fund. So, you folks adopt a sort of a cash basis budget, which is, you know, pretty typical. And your books are kept on full accrual, which means reductions to principal expenses, capital outlay, go on the balance sheet. But your budget should be presented, the budget to actual should be presented in accordance with the legal method you adopted, the budget, which we're gonna do. And then we'll do a revision after we present September to you folks to convert it back to full accrual. And then we'll give you that kind of reconciliation. I think it'll be a lot, just a little more communication. And I appreciate all your comments. They're spot on. So, that's all I have to say, Cal.
Okay. Any other questions on financials?
I, I do.
Yes, Catherine?
Um, last month, the, I brought to the attention that the.
$10.
Were, for the mosquito spraying, were done to the contract portion. I don't think that's been corrected in this month's figure, taking it out of the contract and putting it into chemicals. I can't remember what the amount was for Clark. I didn't see it on the general ledger, and I didn't see where any of the total was adjusted on the trend report. And then the other thing that I noticed was, we deducted the late charge from two phone bills again. And they charged us another one that was more. So I really.
They, they ate that too. The, it's the same one that they never took off. It just kept carrying, carrying. Even though they took it off, they, it's not the easiest company to work with.
Yeah. Especially when you just have the computer just spitting out things, because it, the human element isn't in there. But I hate to see us paying service charges or late fees.
I, I agree. And if it's anything we do, then we pick up the late charge. But they've eaten, or they've waived all the late charges, but every month it shows up again. And we get a late charge because we didn't pay the late charge, which they waived.
Right, that's exactly what it is.
Kinda crazy, yeah.
Yep, that's it. Okay, that was all I had.
Okay.
I have one more.
If there's no other question, oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more. On the balance sheet, I noticed we're removing, we're backing out our, not the accounts receivable, the assessment receivables for both water sewer and general fund. But that number, when you add it together, is almost 300,000. Is that the total number of uncollectibles we've had for one year or more than one year?
No, that would just be for the one year. It, I'm trying to, I'm looking at the balance sheet. I'm trying to see where there's, I see 93,000. Oh, okay, yes. Yes.
And is it mostly?
See that? I remember we discussed that.
It's in the half.
We, the staff, and I'm trying to put my finger on what it was. David, do you recall that? That was one of our discussions about, because it's the transfer from the, for the debt service.
No, I think what that is, that was. Yeah, I think that was the billings that we were doing ourselves, because we didn't put it on the tax collector's roll, because we knew the chances were very great that we wouldn't collect it. But then we do a reversal. You know, allowing for bad debt, knowing the chances are, we're not gonna get it. So we didn't wanna spend that revenue.
Right.
But my question was, that's only the year. But my question was, that's only the year 2020?
Okay.
That's the.
Actually, that, that was, uh, an adjustment by the auditor and we'll send something to you, Terry.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, your auditor asked us to remove it, so we did.
Yeah, if I, um, so in the water and sewer fund, there's a 218,215 accounts receivable. And so accounts receivable are supposed to be presented at net realizable value. So the gross amount of the receivable is 218,215 in the water fund, and then it was uh, 72,057. And then you valued it by using a contra account called allowance for doubtful accounts. And the auditors just took the balance and wrote it off. Um, because they felt apparently, because it netted to zero.
It's not going to be collectible.
Yeah, it apparently.
My question was, they wrote it off, but is it an accumulated number or was it just the uncollectible for 2020?
It wa-, it looks to me to be, it looks to me, the, so the entry was made in 2019 by the auditors in September. We had it on the books. Yeah, we had it on the books because as I remember, because I, I work with Cal in 18 when, uh, I lived in Fort Myers. Um, and I, what I recall, and this is just, and we can run it down for you, ma'am. But what I recall is that we wanted to leave it on the books to memorialize it. You know, in the event that it ever could turn to something, but then we valued it to zero using a contra account. And then the auditors, and I was in, it, so that audit adjustment got posted into your books on the balance sheet um, in, in this fiscal year, but it really goes back to, uh, 2019. I know it sounds like gobbledygook. I know I sound like a life insurance salesman, but, um, I recall that we had about, well, you know, they, who understands what those guys say? Um, the.
Well, I think in this case, in this case, I recommended we do the contra account. Because the advantage was knowing, you know, when you tell the community, we don't have the money. Well, looking at that number, tell me that's part of the reason why.
Right, no, no. That was, that was the correct, that was the correct entry, but for whatever reasons, and I wasn't around, um, the auditors wanted to get it off the books for whatever reason. Maybe they're, they're not even valued, valid receivables anymore.
Right, right, well, they really are.
Basically, they're not.
Yeah.
Cause the county took over the North Hotel.
Okay, oh, that's right, that's right. So they're gone now, but that really.
They're, they're current.
To answer your question, ma'am.
Put them on the tax roll.
Yeah, to answer your question, those were, those were old numbers that predate September 19. They probably go back to 17 or 16 or whatever. So we just had them on the books. They're gone. So that, to answer your question, those are cumulative numbers.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else on the financials? All right, uh, need a motion to accept?
So approved.
I'll put out a motion to accept the financials as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
And then, uh, Mr. Davis, uh, Mr. Kish seconded, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, that takes us to, oh, I'm sorry, then we had the, uh, the FEMA language. Uh, what, uh, you got, Chris sent it, sent you a copy of it. It's pretty, pretty basic. It, uh, says if there's anything over a hundred thousand dollars of, uh, funds being spent on a federal nature in one contract, then we'll make sure that they, we go through the, uh, anti-lobby verification, uh, under the Hatch Act. Uh, it, if FEMA, yeah, we have to get this approved. We have to include it in our contract, say that we'll do it on your behalf.
Okay.
Okay, it's, uh, and you guys did get about forty thousand dollars, I believe. So, um, Dan, there is no hurry on this. I don't see a hurricane, you know, about ready to come. Dan, you're okay with, uh, you can put it in our contract and then put it back before the board? Or does the board want to approve that language and have your attorney included and authorize the chair to sign? Either way, it's fine with me.
I say we go, I say we go ahead and approve it, Cal.
Okay. Is that a motion to?
Yeah, that's a motion to, go ahead.
To, uh, approve this language. And this language is right out of the federal statute. So, uh, we didn't write it. They, they said, this is what you will put in. So, uh, and then you're going to authorize the attorney to, uh, your motion is to accept the language as an inclusion in our contract and authorize the attorney to make the adjustments. And if you just want to do it as an amendment sheet and then, uh, the chair to sign. Is that correct, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct.
And then Ms. Dillon, that was a second? Okay, uh, all right, well, I already had Mr. Davis's, uh, motion.
Okay.
So you're second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that takes us to the field report. And everyone's got a copy of it. Uh, Chris identified that there's some hydrola growing. Uh, and he's communicated that with, uh, your, your contractor that's taking care of the lakes. Uh, hydrola can quickly overtake a lake. And then, you know, I've seen it in areas where birds are walking on it. So it's, uh, it's something you don't want to see. It's a submerged weed and, uh, we'll make sure that that gets taken care of. Uh, you'll notice on page two that there's several, uh, fire hard hydrant roadway markers. That's the blue, uh, uh, markers that identify fire, uh, hydrants. Uh, which Chris sees that they're gone. He just puts them in. It's, it's about 10 bucks. They're, they're not expensive. Uh, the, uh, there's some silt in Case Drive, uh, the water gut, the stormwater gutter. And, uh, when he's got a crew in there, they'll knock it off. Uh, the, all the weeds that were identified, uh, Robert had that in his notes that they took care of it. Uh, you'll see on page three that, uh, there's 32 sections of sidewalk that, that got, that got damaged by, uh, contractors for new homes. And, uh, we'll make sure, uh, David, uh, will, I think you've got a contact with them, but we'll make sure that they're, they replace those.
Yeah, just send the, uh, contractor's name to your office.
Oh, awesome. Thanks, Terry. Uh, the, we talked about the, uh, the pepper, the invasive, uh, plants, uh, that are on private lots and that we're going to resend them with pictures. Uh, he's got pictures of the monuments, uh, other little things he picked. Now, we are, although we're still under budget for the year, we're starting the new fiscal year. And you'll see that we're 11 mosquito applications over what you budget for. But that was on the old rate and, uh, uh, Russ negotiated such a great deal with, uh, the contractor that, uh, uh, the 71, the extra 11 are, you know, within your budget. So there, that's not a, a problem. Um, let's see.
I have not been bit by one mosquito this year.
Oh, well, that's, uh, Russ, uh, or, uh, uh, Chad, I was just talking to him and he asked when we wanted to stop. And I said, well, you need to do the mosquito counts. And, uh, if you're not getting whatever, you know, his license says, if you're not getting the counts, then he can stop. But for right now, I don't know where his counts are. So, but if the counts are down, then they'll stop. And I, I, I'm really not sure what the number is. Okay, uh, on page 10, uh, Mitch, you might be able to address this, but there's a blowout on the well road and Chris couldn't get back there. But, uh, what, uh, what happened? What's, uh, he's got pictures, big hole and there's water running into it.
Yes, when we had all the rain, um, the water got so high that it, it was actually flowing over the well road. And it washed out a spot in the well road, but the, uh, uh, park people came and repaired it, I believe. So I think it is, it is fixed now.
Okay, but there, he said it looked like one was fixed. And when they, uh, started to go over the gravelled area, he noticed a second one.
Uh, I'm not aware of a second one. So I'll have to take a drive myself back there and see, but absolutely, I will. And if there is a second one, if there is a second one, am I okay to reach out to the park and, and see if it's something they'll fix and have them do it?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Now, was there, is that a broken, uh, water main or irrigation line or?
No, what it is, is there's, there's a culvert pipe back there. So there's an area made to let the water flow under the road. But when the water gets so high, it flows over. It actually washes the dirt from above the culvert pipe. It washes it out.
Yeah, almost looks like.
It happened, it happened after Irma as well.
Yeah. Okay, um, the other item on that page also is the, uh, the pepper and the other vegetation that's pushing the fence back. Uh, Chris, when he talked to the state, he, they said, well, we'll cut the overhanging branches, but that's about it. Uh, Chris could go in and do a, a quick and dirty job, spray, and then come back the next day and, and cut the pepper back. Uh, it's not, you know, it'd be when they're out there doing other tasks. Uh, total cost would be five or $600, uh, for the two days. And, uh, is that fine? Do you want to have that done? But that's vegetation's going to keep pushing that fence and you don't want that fence knocked over.
Yeah, we need to go ahead and get it cleaned up, Cal.
Yep, yep.
Okay. All right, we'll take care of that as a maintenance item, uh, using Chris's team. Uh, other than that, uh, any questions on Chris's report? All right, the, uh, he had a, a, uh, follow-up on, uh, the litoral planting and you had a copy of his, uh, report. Let me put my hands on it. Uh, but you had a copy of, uh, his report that basically said that the, uh, uh, basically said that the water level is, uh, not conducive to doing the planting, but he still plans on doing it. I believe he's not charging you for it because of the delay.
I, I think we should send him a thank you note for that.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause that was what, $700 or something like that?
Yeah, it was something like that. Yeah, I think you're right. All right, um.
I have some things, Cal.
Sure.
Um, one of them, okay, that took care of coastal, the exotics, whatever kind of tree it is there on Case Drive and entrance part on our property, pro, on the, um, acreage that goes to that east side of Case Drive. Are we going to do anything with those? What should we do? Where do we want to go?
What page was that, Catherine?
I don't, don't have it right here. Let me see if I can find it. Um, I thought it was towards the end. Somebody help me. There it is, page eight and nine, I think. Mature, mature earleaf acacia tree. And he's got a picture of the property where they're on. If Chris's guys are going to be treating what's on the, uh, fence line, maybe he can treat what's on ours. I don't know which is on our property and which is on the other guy's, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, it, you see the, the highlighted area. I, we can have Chris take care of our property. Uh, he's going to be cheaper than anyone else. It will just, as long as it's like you can do it in a day or no more than two.
Yeah, okay.
Does that sound good?
I, I think we're, we're addressing exotics. May as well hit these two.
Go ahead. Any objections? All right, anything else, Catherine?
Sure, um, happened to take a ride over by the North Hotel and, um, what's going on there at the air, airplane club? Um, their landing and takeoff field looks very nice and trimmed and cut and everything. The grass on the other 17 acres is high. Is it just at 17 inches where it's not going to be affected by Collier County Code? Or are they supposed to do that too? Um.
They're supposed to do that too.
Okay, or is the grass just growing so, so fast because of the weather that it becomes impossible sometimes? If, if.
I'll send a nasty letter to them.
Don't be too nasty, just do it nicely.
Okay.
At least the first time. Um.
Okay, well, we have sent a letter previously to them. So this isn't the first time that they.
Yes, the first rodeo. Then I've got one question and, and I don't know if this is for Dan or not. Um, I happen to go to a little bit of a deal on towing. And according to the presentation, the ability to tow is governed by Florida statute 715-07 or .07. Are the signs that we have down the center divide of Newport, are they legal signs where we can actually tow somebody from those areas? Or are we just wanting people to stay off the grass and maybe need to change the signs to, um, pleasant looking, keep off the grass sign? I, I just don't know about the legality of those signs.
Somebody send me a top, a picture of one of them.
Sure, it's, okay, Chris has it in his report clear up at the top. Uh, page two. Chris has got pictures because they end up coming down. Dan, if you can't see it, I'll go take a, a copy and I'll go and get a closer one and then I'll send it to Cal.
And four, page 14 of the packet, but page two of the, uh, report.
I mean, the signs are supposed to be so high off the ground and tell you where it's going and you need.
Can't really see them, want to blow it up. So somebody could send me one, you know, just so I can check the verbiage. But, yeah, you know, they do have to be properly displayed.
Okay, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Chris has, Chris has got it on the, uh, computer screen, Dan.
Yeah, when I try to blow it up, I can't really. Yeah.
I'll take, I'll take the picture and send it to you.
Okay, and I'll just send everybody a note.
Okay. Thank you. That was all I had.
Okay, anything else on Chris's report? All right, uh, let's see, the litoral plantings will send a thank you and then, uh, David. All right, uh, let's see, the littoral plantings will send a thank you and then David, you and Ron are up.
Good. Hi, this is David Schmidt with Full Montez. Ron is in the office with me, so if there's some questions for Ron, he's available. Uh, just a quick synopsis of what we've been doing the last month. Ron's been involved with the meter change out program. And uh, that's going on right now. Uh, and then as far as some drainage issues, we did look at the 121 Newport Drive. It's been going on for a few months. And I was out there, met with the contractor one more time and they they were out there the next day and they sent us some pictures and so forth. And that should be resolved. I I haven't looked at it since the contractor did their work, but the pictures they sent seems to indicate it should be done. And then we on one seventy one seventy four Sunset K where they removed that sidewalk with the new construction. We we did chase down the owner's names. One's actually an owner builder for a lot or for one seventy four. And then it's we Builders Incorporated for one seventy and we did send emails to them and farming of the need to replace and take care of things. I haven't been out there. Have they removed all that concrete sidewalk they tore up? I I haven't had the opportunity. Most of it, okay.
Yeah. But it's still covered with dirt and it's still protruding from the ground.
Okay, I've got to be down that way towards Marco Island today. While I'm down that way, I may just run out there real quick, take a few pictures. And then follow up with the contractors one more time and see if we can get it cleaned up. Good.
Thank you.
Good. And while we were talking about the field reports and so forth, it was mentioned about the wellfield road being washed out. Uh, ju- just information uh, that when doing some repairs and so forth out there. Uh, just be careful because it also underneath the wellfield road on that berm, there is uh, the wellfield piping. And that's an AC water main, so just be careful while that works going on and just be aware that it is out there. And with that, any questions?
Yep.
Nope.
All right. Uh, Dan, anything on prep Mac?
Uh, that hearing is in November, uh, I believe it's. Twenty third. I'm not sure of the date. Uh, the other thing that I need to talk to you about. It is November twentieth. The other thing that we need to talk about is uh, the governor's made it clear that there's not going to be an extension of the order allowing. For the remote meeting. So we're going to have to plan for November to have a quorum physically present. We still have to comply with CDC guidelines. Uh, regarding, you know, the number of people that can be present, separation, wearing masks, those kinds of things. But we are going to have to have a physical form present.
Okay. That's I I was anticipating that it was going to happen.
Yeah.
All right, anything for Dan?
So basically what we could do is have three people there. And uh, still have everybody else appear remotely or have it available for those that want to. I'm sorry.
Is the wifi available at the clubhouse?
Yeah.
I believe there is. Tony?
It is, yeah, and the password unless they've removed its passwords on the inside of. One of the cabinet doors by the refrigerator in the clubhouse.
All right.
Well, we'll get we'll get that from Audrey and we'll uh, share it with everyone uh, that will be there. I I'm uh, I'll bring my computer. And so we'll open up a remote line if that's uh, if the board wants to do that. Okay. Anything else?
Cal, one question, uh, the the invoice for Soto for $3,300, did we want an approval or on that or we on hold? I doubt in my notes, I don't see that we discussed that.
No, that that was uh, we did discuss it and we're not going to have Soto do it. But we'll say that Soto's available and then they'll contract with him. And if it's not done, we'll turn it over to code enforcement.
Okay, yeah, that's that's kind of what I thought. I just wanted to double check. Thanks.
Okay. Um, let's see, nothing else for the attorney going to old business, the North Hotel Parcel thirteen. I have not heard from the uh, the gentleman that's been communicating with us regarding development options. And as far as I know, my all the conversations I've had with the county is that they're still on schedule. Uh, they bid that workout, they're hoping to have it down by the end of the year. Early January, so. Dan, have you heard anything else? Okay. Uh, the invasive vegetation, uh, we kind of covered all that. Is there? Can we move on or is there anything else?
Now, hold on.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Anything? Okay, uh, moving right along, uh, that gets us to the meter change out program. And uh, I you've got a copy of the RFP that we sent out uh, early this month. And we're trying to expedite this as quickly as possible because we've got about fifty to a hundred meters that are bad. And we can't get a solid reading off of them. Uh, so once the bid is awarded, we know which meters you're going to use, we'll get fifty to a hundred of them. And Mitch will go ahead and uh, install them and we'll run them manually until the radio read is up and running. But uh, the timeline that we're looking at is that uh, next Friday, the bids will be due at eight thirty in the morning. And then that day, there's a special meeting that we've advertised uh, by the board. It'll be a remote meeting. And uh, just need to log in and uh, it should be a pretty quick meeting. Uh. But uh, before, after the bids are received. Now, all we're going to do on the twenty third is open bids. And then the board would refer it to staff. Uh, or the committee, however you want to refer to us, and then we'll evaluate them. Then we'll come back with a recommendation to the board at the November meeting for award. And then we'll everything will kick off from there. Now, we've got a committee that consists of either Dave or Ron or maybe both. Uh, myself, Mitch, uh, Jennifer Miller, our controller, uh, Nancy. Who's been preparing the specs for us and Russ Supervisor Kish. Uh, who would be representing the board and getting their input. Uh, other than that, then we'll come back with a recommendation. Would the board like to see the recommended vendor? That uh, that we're suggesting, the committee is suggesting, make a presentation at the meeting before actual award. Otherwise, we'll just bring the bid to you. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to meet, meet and greet them too.
Okay, so we'll have the recommended vendor make a presentation, answer all your questions. And uh, that'll be a live meeting and uh, then after it's the next day. We're thinking that uh, or the next following Monday after your meeting, maybe that Friday whenever Mitch gets around to it. But he's going to order the fifty to a hundred after you've awarded. And then he'll start putting in those to replace bad meters. And then he figures it's going to take uh, four to six weeks. Uh, so we're saying by the end of the year, the meters will be delivered. And then he'll start putting them in and it's about a thousand meters. And uh, we'll get it taken care of, so. I wanted you to have the timeline so you guys were familiar with it. It's the quickest we can move. Uh, I know Supervisor Kish wanted, you know, to make sure, because we've got we're losing revenue. And he wanted to make sure that we uh, got this as quickly as possible, so this is the fastest. Because we do have to bid, it exceeds the threshold, this is the fastest we could uh, we could beat all of the state requirements.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one question also on the current meters. You want to go first, Catherine?
Sure, thank you, Terry. Um, question for Mitch, you order, well, you want to include 400 lids for irrigation? What's the story story on that?
Four hundred lids?
Yeah, the whatever. You don't know anything about it? Okay, it was irrigation lids, okay.
Were uh, was that in the specifications or?
It was. Don't worry about it right now. It'll all get worked out. I was just curious. Because one of the things I noticed when I was looking at my meter itself, the lid that the meter is in is cracked. Uh, my neighbors has the little flap hanging off and I just wonder if we don't. Want to consider looking at those boxes that need to have new lids. Now, I realize that they're not going to be using the lids anymore because it's all going to be electronic, but. I don't know if there's an advantage or not to getting the new lid to the meter box itself.
Okay.
You know, the the black cover.
The cover for the irrigation meter. Uh, so which would be the same for the not the same meter, but the same situation with the water meters. Uh, are you going to have covers for them?
Well, the the meters are inside a meter box, so and they have a they have a lid that flips down on top of the meter. Uh, you know what? I say that some of the new ones don't, but nevertheless, they 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 do have a lid. When we go through and replace the meters, I can make a list of of all the bad lids. And they get a price to replace those and then the board can decide if they want to replace them.
That that works for me. I don't know how bad.
Yeah, is the purpose of the lid to protect the meter?
Uh, and to protect people from falling in. I mean, as we go through, if we find one that's missing a lid, we usually try to replace it. Or if the lid's like broken in half to where if you were to step on it, it would cave in and you would fall in, we try to replace those. But like if it's cracked or just the the there's actually a lid within the lid that you can flip up to read. If those are cracked, we usually just don't bother with those.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, this this is Ron. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, we we have a number of lids. I can't remember if it's four or 500, which is, you know, less than half. Of what we're going to end up buying in meters and we were getting a price for for those. Uh, which had been in the previous quotes that we based our budget on. And the reason would be those that need to be replaced, we would replace them.
Okay.
Uh, and I I think Mitch had estimated the number uh, back when we first put the budget together. And to want to make sure it was included in the bid, so that's in there. Uh, some number which was was a 400 and we have what like 1100 meters?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's and I think they were described as irrigation lids and I and I not sure Mitch if you had. Put a exact description of what the what the meter size and or the meter vault size is. To define which lids they're bidding, but if we didn't, we probably need to add that description in an addendum before the bids come in.
So is it possible? Is it possible when they bid, they can just bid that price, but we're not we're not committed to it? And then once we do the count, we've got that price locked in and then say it's only say it's 75 lids, then we can go back and just actually get those 75?
Yeah, we what we need to do is we had we had put some of the bid items in with a number as like a minimum. So let's say you have 1100 and 50 meters, we said we would buy a minimum, I think of a thousand. And then they were to put in a price per meter for that would be good for a year, so we could buy new meters at the same price. And so we could we could slightly change the bid form as an addendum before they actually they fill it in. So if we want to clarify those lids, we can say we'll buy a hundred minimum. But we want to be able to buy up to 400. If we want to for the price that's in the contract and that way, you know, you can order them throughout the year. Because you, you know, we we put it in with a minimum that you would buy. And then a price guaranteed for more, so that way we end up how are meters you end up needing when you buy them? So yeah, we can make much change to the bid form and it takes, I think they'll clarify it.
Okay.
And that's all on page two of the proposal, so.
Yeah.
It's specified in there like that already.
Yeah, so what is, I'll make sure that if a change needs to be made, David and I'll send it to you, okay?
Okay.
Today, we'll mark it up and send it back to you today, Cal. Is there any value? Is there any value to the old used ones?
Uh, the old meters? Yeah, there probably is a a scrap value, a a small value, absolutely. I don't know what that is and there is probably. There's probably 50 or 100 meters um, at the water plant that's been collected over the years too. So when it's all done, you'll have like 11 or 1200 brass meters.
Maybe uh, somebody would like them, well, break.
Yeah, they can probably be sold to a scrap yard, um, which I'm glad to facilitate for you when it's all done, if you like.
Probably I'll look into it.
I remember Collier County used to have a surplus sale. And they would put the information out to other government agencies to see if they were interested in buying.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, there's no sense in not working into it anyway.
Sure.
Absolutely. Okay, Terry, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, last night I spoke to a neighbor and he mentioned the the water meters. And what he mentioned was he has a water meter, I I think he's a condo owner. He has a water meter that's hidden by plants or whatever. And he was curious and he looked into it and the association or whoever that group is. Gets a bill every month, something like $3.49 and it never changes. And I thought that was odd to have a meter that never changed. Now, I would imagine with the new meters, if they're changed out, that would be fine, but is this meter being seen? By us? I don't know. I could find out what the address is.
I I don't know what your base rate is, but. If if there's no usage, then it would just be a base rate charge, correct? Correct, Cal?
Correct.
Okay, but I don't I don't know.
Have hands, right? Yeah, okay, but I'll find out where the meters anyway and get and get back to you on it, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Everyone's happy with the uh, the timeline, the specs?
Well, I get I get a question. You said that there was going to be one meeting in between our next meeting for these water meters?
Yes, next Friday. Next Friday is uh, that would be to open bids.
Twenty third.
What day is the meeting?
Friday.
No.
No, this Friday you're talking.
Oh. Yeah, uh, next Friday. Let's see, the twenty third, what I don't have a.
Twenty third, next Friday.
Okay, now what do I have to be? I have to be available for that meeting at what time? You got to send me. I have to be available for that meeting at what time? You gotta send me some information or something, so I'm ready.
One o'clock, I think.
One o'clock?
Yeah, and
And that's a virtual?
Now, what we're doing, it's a virtual meeting, correct?
Okay.
And all we're doing is opening bids. There's no decisions, no review. Uh, what we'll do is, what we'll ask the board to do as a whole is to refer it to the committee for review and recommendation. And then we've got until the next meeting to come up with a recommendation, and that committee is what's identified on the uh, timeline.
Okay.
I, I know you said you'd be gone, but
No, I'm not, I'm not leaving. I'm not leaving the, uh, the twenty-third anymore, so I'll be here.
Oh, okay, good.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Then we're moving right along on that. Uh, the uh, one-twenty Wilderness Cave. One-twenty, uh, Noreen, did you have something?
No, no, I did work on it.
Okay, uh, one-twenty Wilderness Cave, one-fifty-seven Cave Drive. Uh, Chris sent out some pictures, and that work started, it's probably done by now.
Yeah, close.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, then uh, we have been looking into the internet cable bolt services, and uh, we also contacted Summit Broadband, and uh, besides Comcast. And uh, both of them have an interest in coming here. Uh, the, we looked at, is there an opportunity to maybe uh, issue a, a uh, franchise agreement, which would make it more attractive to them. But I think uh, Chris Tudek has been doing most of the uh, communication, but I believe that we're in pretty good shape to get somebody else in here. The, having a franchise agreement is going to be tough. Okay, Chris, would you, any other comment on that?
Uh, just that, um, so Summit, the guy at Summit uh, said that he was already in talks with some of the condo associations about trying to get a package together to get fiber installed to the community, because the Century Link television is apparently going away. Um, and his price point for them was like around a hundred dollars per resident. But if, if uh, he could get a package together that covered, you know, all the condos, the single-family homes, the hotel, all of that, that he thinks that the price could be much cheaper. Um, so he's gonna get back to me on a presentation for that. Uh, Comcast, um, I've got a contact, but I haven't gotten a result of their survey yet for installation.
That sounds reasonable.
I know the, the residents really need it.
Yeah, and we're gonna be built out. Five years, we'll be built out here anyway, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep it going.
Anything else? We'll keep working on that, we'll keep it on the agenda.
Okay.
Alrighty, uh, supervisors, requests and or comments?
I, I have one.
Okay.
We're getting, we're getting a whole lot of new people in, new buildings, which is really great. Um, the one thing I think we should do again is on the next water bill, put out about if you want to be on the robo-call for the boil notices, to call this number and set it up. Lot of new people coming in.
Okay.
That was all I have.
All right, uh, Noreen, I saw your little screen light up. Did you have something?
Uh, no, not this time.
I got a question. I, I got a question for Mitch. When I look at the Port of the Islands annual water flow?
Yes, sir.
And I see a year ago, and I see this, you know, September first to September first?
Yep.
Were that much, I mean, is that last month the same as, you know what I mean? Is it comparable year to year, September first to September first? And we're down that much, or is that a month off?
I, I would think it's not a month off. I don't have it right in front of me. And I do have some communities that are totally different this year, because we don't have people returning because of COVID, or people stayed away. Um, and as you repair leaks and so forth, you pick up some water. So, it's not uncommon for there to be, for the year to year not to match. But I, I do not have those numbers right in front of me to, to look up and give you an exact answer.
Well, no, we're, we're just a lot lower than uh, last year, it looks like. That's why I was wondering about these meters that aren't running. Maybe we're losing more than we think we're losing.
I, I'm certain that you're losing a lot. But the meters going out um, of the plant, those are calibrated annually, so those are accurate. So we shouldn't be losing anything on that end.
Okay, it's, oh, good. So it comes from the plant, not from the accumulation of the totals?
Uh, i- if you're looking at what I think you are, I don't know. If you're looking at from the billing, then that would come from the meters out in the field.
No, no, it says Port of the Islands drinking water monthly flow rate.
That would be the plant.
Oh, yes, that's coming from, that's coming from my meters at the plant, and that is accurate. Yep.
Okay. Well, I, I got a question for you then. If it's coming, if it's coming from your end, do they ever total the other end? So to see if all the meters are matching, you know what I mean? Then we'd know what the difference was.
I, I total, it, it's very complex back there, because we bring the water out of the ground, we total it. Then we process it through the RO, and it gets totaled. But when it goes through the RO, it gets separated, so you have some waste, you have some product. So those numbers get totaled, and then it gets sent out, and it's totaled again. And then when it comes back at sewage, it's totaled. Then it goes through the sewer plant, and it's red, it goes like six different ways, and red through six different meters, and totaled. And yes, we try to compare all of that. But I don't, we don't compare against what the customer uses as far as the meters that are red monthly out in the field with the customer.
Are you sure you are in a federal government agency?
I know, right?
I, I have one more thing, but continue this. I don't want the other to get sidetracked. Russ, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Um, today's Naples paper. Uh, Dave Carpenter from the uh, Elections Bureau had a rundown on CDDs. The Port of the Islands was mentioned twice. Uh, I tell you, I don't remember what page it was, but it was a continuation. When the Port of the Islands sewer system failed, for example, he said it CCD hired experts to build a phenomenal one that ensures treated water ensures treated water doesn't get into its surrounding waters. And it goes on, and it talks about the website. So um, you may want to pull this out for future reference. Um, it was just a heading, CDDs, and Dave Carpenter did it. So, it was kind of interesting. There was a gentleman at the end, I believe he was from Fiddler's Creek, did a good job of explaining um, CDDs and its involvement in the community. So, just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
What time did you get up to read the paper?
I was up at five o'clock. Which is normal.
Hey, all right, uh, Tony, anything?
I don't have anything, Cal. We're good.
Okay, Terry, what about you?
The only thing I have, the election is coming up, and I want to wish all the candidates running success and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll start with audience, okay, thank you. Uh, the uh, audience comments. Is there anyone that has a, oh, I'm sorry, Noreen, did you have something yet?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay.
Um, this is Diane Morrow. I was muted, but I wanted to say thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
This is Michelle Holloway. Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
This is Ray Jensen.
Any other?
This is Ray Jensen. Thank you, Terry, and I do have a, a few things. Um, the first of them are to Mitch. Mitch, uh, I'd like to tell the board, and I'd like everybody to know that since Irma, I think that you are a magician, and uh, I think you're the best possible choice ever made to uh, run the water and sewer facility. Um, I'm telling you that now, um, because you inherited uh, kind of a mess. Uh, the, the water plant and wastewater because of Severn Trent leaving and a vacuum being created was in a pretty bad state of disrepair. So I want you to know that um, any comments, especially mine, about the boil water was absolutely never directed at you, and that you made it a lot better, and it hasn't happened since. Having said that, uh, I do have a couple of questions. Um, one, there was a guy right after Irma, and I'm amazed that you got up, us up and running in like a, a day after Irma hit, after going twelve years without hurricanes, with what you had to deal with. That's number one. But having said that, um, a guy that was working for you as a sublet or something, happened to be in front of my house a day or two or three after the hurricane. And he had a bunch of fuel in the back of a pickup truck, and we got to talking. He was a Spanish guy, and I said, what's all that fuel for? And he said, well, we have a rental generator over at the fire apparatus pumps by the weir, and there are rental generator up by the wellheads, the main wellheads, and I'm uh, continually bringing fuel up to them to run them. And I said, you mean they're portable? And he goes, yeah, they're rental, uh, because the equipment there wasn't running. So, um, how is, is that true? Did that happen?
Uh, that is partially true, absolutely. There is a generator out in the wellfield that is permanent. The generator was knocked out by the hurricane, so it would not um, run. And when he said rental, I don't know where that came from, because Port of the Islands has two of your own portable generators. So, the portable generators were taken, one was taken back to the wellfield and run the wells, and the other one was taken around to pump down the lift station. And he is correct. There was no fuel available. We had, of course, the big generator was full of fuel, but the, the portables were full. They run out in a day, and we had five hundred gallons of diesel of our own, and then we were going, at that time, we were having to go as far as Punagorda to get diesel. So I had guys constantly making trips to Punagorda to get diesel fuel to run those portable generators, and to keep the big generator topped off until um, emergency services stepped in and actually was able to get us fuel faster.
Right, and ultimately, like FEMA was taking, bringing you in fuel too, right?
After the fact.
Right, after the fact.
Not, not, not within the first ten days.
Right, that's right, that's right. Um, I've got another question that's unrelated to that. Uh, how long was the uh, control room needing air conditioning, and has it been replaced now, and how much did it cost?
It has not been replaced. It has been ordered, because they are split, uh, mini splits, but they're three ton, and the average mini split is a ton and a half to two. They have been ordered. We have a portable air conditioner that we've been running to keep it cool, and at no time has it been hot or anything been damaged. But yes, it, the board voted, and um, it, it has been agreed on, and it's in the process of being taken care of.
Yeah, how much was it?
I don't remember. It was in the range of ten thousand dollars. I don't have that exact dollar amount in front of me.
Okay, well, I just want you to know, I think you're doing a stellar job, and the people I talked to, including Robert Edge, who used to run the plant, tell me you're a magician. So I just thought you should know that. Um, lastly-
I appreciate that. I take my job serious, whether it's your community or another community, we just try to do our very best. And we're, we're happy to be working for you guys.
People told me that you stayed, you yourself stayed in the plant during the hurricane. Is that right?
We did not. We were gonna stay in the, in the plant that night, but because the, they called for the, the real high storm surge, we left about nine PM, and we were back at four AM. So we left late, and we were back early. We were the first ones, as far as I know, to come across forty-one um, that night. And we actually were walking the wellfield and water up to our knee in the dark, cutting trees to get the wells back up and running. But it was impossible by the time, we had so many water breaks. By the time we got the wellfield back up and running, we had run out of water and lost the water pressure.
Yeah, amazing, amazing job getting it back up. Lastly, um, Cal, I spoke to the supervisor of Elections, and uh, he said that whoever uh, gets elected um, has to be sworn in no later than the second Tuesday after Election Day, which is the seventeenth. So I just thought I'd make you aware of that, because it's prior to the November live meeting. And ask you
Correct.
how those people will get sworn in.
Well, it's, it's no more than, it's gotta be uh, uh, no earlier than. So on the uh, seventeenth, I'm trying to think, the next meeting is the twentieth, so uh, that would be on the agenda for the twentieth, where we would swear in the new supervisors at that time.
Okay. He said, I'm not, not arguing with you, he said no later than two weeks after Election Day. But it doesn't matter to me. I'm just asking.
That's what Cal said. Yeah, but Cal said that.
No, I thought he said uh, that the early-
Not before.
Not before.
The earliest-
Not after.
But two weeks, two, two, the second Tuesday after the election, uh, and not before. They take over from that point on. So I, that's what we've always gone by. Dan, you got anything you want to weigh in on that?
We've always done it the first meeting after the election. It doesn't have to be at the first meeting. You can send up the oath if you can sign it.
Yeah, we usually do it uh, right at the meeting. So, but however the board wants to do it.
Okay, thanks. That's all I've got.
Okay. Alrighty, any other audience comments?
Uh, hi, it's Audrey Sanders. Just want to say that we had the second meeting greet yesterday, last night. We had an excellent turnout of multiple capacity. Uh, Catherine did a wonderful job explaining the role of the CID and her candidacy. Uh, we had the Sheriff Department there, who actually surveils Port of the Island, and she had great statistics. And the two Cuyahoga County Commissioners were there, and explained their platform. And I think everybody enjoyed it, and it was, I think, a great experience for whoever attended either by the phone or present. So I want to thank Catherine and the other CID members who came to the meeting to support the effort.
Thank you, Audrey.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, uh, Noreen, uh, this is your last meeting, and it's uh, I, I know I'm gonna miss you. Your, your guidance and uh, everything in the, you know, uh, the fifteen-plus years you've been on the board has been very commendable. And uh, like I say, you will be greatly missed.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Uh, uh, it's been a pleasure, it really has. And uh, just a health issue, so, but I do want to make a comment about the hurricane and Mitch, and I don't know if people are aware that the day after the hurricane, that Monday, Mitch and Tony went around the port with chainsaws and pickup truck, and managed to cut logs and that across the road, so people at the port could get through and get through to their homes. And I don't think- and get to their home. And I don't think everybody ever really knew that or gave them any credit for it, you know? Anyway, people should know that.
Well, thank you, Noreen. But Mitch, Mitch gets the bulk of the credit there because he's, uh, he was out multiple times and mu- multiple trips getting diesel fuel. And if it hadn't been for the saving graces of, uh, King Manshur to the Greater Naples Fire District, who got us hooked up with the Cuyahoga County Emergency Services that, uh, brought in the, the diesel on a daily basis for us. So that saved us not only a lot of time and effort, but a lot of money too.
I, yes, and I'm aware of that because I, we're talking with Mitch a lot, just in case, about where there was diesel railroads and they were them. These guys were driving to town to get diesel. And, uh, and then like you said, the Sheriff Department helped us out. A lot of people
Yes. Yes, thank you, Noreen.
You are more than welcome, Pierre.
Yeah, we're, we're missing is what Dale Lambert used to call tribal knowledge. We're, we're losing a lot of that with Noreen, uh, leaving the board. So, uh, uh, we may keep your, we may keep your phone active calling and asking some questions from time to time.
Yeah.
Around. I hope so, anyway.
Okay, don't forget, Noreen, uh, you still are on the board for the next meeting too, which is the, uh, next, uh, the 40?
Right, right.
7th, whatever. So, okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else, oh, I'm sorry. Mitch, did you have something?
No, sir. I just, thank you, Noreen and everybody, and that's it.
Thanks, Mitch.
Uh, I guess we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I'm.
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
All right, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See you next week.